Holy Father, thank you again for allowing us to serve the city of Montgomery. I thank you, Lord, that we strive to work together as one team, Father, that we either sink or swim together, Father, that we become one man and one voice, and I think that way we will accomplish much for the city. Father, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for your blessings, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen, all right. The pledge of allegiance to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag?
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, wonderful. Okay, we have some very special guests here this evening that I'm going to read a proclamation that I signed today. So, with that, whereas September 17th, 2024, marks the 237th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Sarah Kunchman, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the Mayor of the City of Montgomery, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideas that the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering the lost rights may never be regained, and witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city to be affixed to this 27th day of August of the year of our Lord 2024. Ladies, I would love to present this to you and come up and take a picture. Council behind you. Do you want to get in?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Stand over here?
Yeah, we're just standing.
Standing. He presented.
You got it?
I think so.
Are we in?
Yeah, we'll send her up.
What are dressed?
Three, two, one. Four, three, two, one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to thank you on behalf of the daughters of the American Revolution. We are the chapter that's charted out of Willis, but most of our members live in Montgomery, and so we very much appreciate this proclamation that supports our three pillars, which are education, patriotism, and historic preservation. Thank you. Thank you so much, ladies. Thank you for all you do.
Yes, thank you.
All right. With that, there's a public forum. Is there anybody here to speak this evening? I would like to, I wanted to do a proclamation, but I'll go ahead and read this letter from June 13th, 2024. Dear Mayor Sarah, City of Montgomery council members, and the residents of the City of Montgomery, Texas, the heart of a city is not just a geographical dot, but the tone and the beat of its citizens. I would like to recognize one of Montgomery's lifelong residents who has continued to raise the bar of civic pride. John Ed Johnny Young has faithfully cared for a very special dot for my family, the Peel Cemetery that lies in the northwest corner of the old Methodist Cemetery. Johnny's faithful oversight of this resting place should not go without any acknowledgement and recognition of what makes Montgomery a city of emotional glue for all. May his dedication serve as a model for all. Most sincerely, Sarah Peel Mabry. So I think that that is, I'm proud of our citizens and those that give back to the city, and I wanted, she wanted to make sure that everybody knew Johnny's good work and deeds. All right. With that, if there's nothing else, the consent agenda. Item number one, approval of the July 23rd, 2024 regular city council meeting minutes. Counsel?
I would like to know who transposed the minutes.
Our Deputy City Secretary, Diana Goo.
I finished well. So if it's the last half?
I just wanted to say they're excellent.
Except for you part, apparently. Except for your part, though. I did the whole thing.
That's awesome.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved by Casey, seconded by Stan, that we approve this consent agenda. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda as presented, stand. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the consent agenda as presented. Regular agenda. Item number two on your agenda, consideration of possible action on a sign variance requested as submitted by signs above for 15325 Summit Park Drive.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The request before you tonight, so I spoke with the attorneys on this, who had some questions about it in terms of the clarity that I think that I had laid this out for you. So if they had questions, very likely someone else does, so if we're looking at, on your page 24 of the packet on the agenda memo, you see this table here. So what we look at is we look at where the frontage is for what the sign size can be. In other words, when we look at this table, A, over on the far right-hand column talks about State Highway 105, FM 10, or FM 149, CB Stewart, and Lone Star Parkway. So FM 1097 is not allowed to have the same size signs as those, they're allowed to have a six-foot sign, maximum 60-foot square foot area. The roadway is very similar in nature, so the applicant has submitted, based on that, has submitted a variance application request. Larry Slade with the sign company is here this evening, any questions you have, he would be able to answer for you. Staff has no objections to the request.
Am I correct in saying that's a 10 by 10 sign? 10 foot?
The proposed sign would be, that's what the variance is being asked for, to go to a 10 by 10 sign, yes, sir.
Instead of six feet?
Instead of 6 by 10, right.
Does it, is it, is it on the curb or anything like that? It's not out close to the road?
Like it's not going to impede that four-way stop?
No.
No, okay.
Make a motion to approve item number two as presented?
Second.
Motion by Casey, seconded by Carol, to approve item number two as presented. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote, is open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting item number two as presented, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept item number two as presented. Item number three on your agenda, consideration of possible action authorizing the issuance of a request for qualifications for engineering services for the water plant number four project.
Evening, Mayor, Council. What is before you tonight is consideration of a request for proposals, or request for qualifications for the water plant number four project, construction of the water plant number four. Now this, I want to go over a few things of what this is and what this is not, to hopefully answer some questions that I know this has. What this is, is an ad for engineering services to complete the design for the water plant number four project. What this is not, is this is not authorizing that design to begin today, this is only requesting qualifications from engineering firms. This project is not authorizing construction to begin, just to get that out of the way. As we have been discussing, we monitor your water plant capacity closely, based on your existing needs and your current future needs, developments that we know are coming, developments that we anticipate to come, whether they are feasibility studies that have been completed and are, whether a development agreement has been executed, or were plans, or even in construction. So we monitor to build out projections of the city very closely. Keeping in mind of what you have and what is coming, we recommend proceeding and releasing a request for qualifications for this plant to keep up with future demand of what is coming in the city. As far as the timeline, you, from start to finish for a water plant of this capacity, which includes the drilling of a new Jasper well and construction of an elevated storage tank and a tower, you're looking at between 18 months to two years. So looking ahead, that is around when this capacity would be needed, when your existing facilities and an additional booster pump to be constructed for water plant degree, you would exceed all of those capacities. The TCEQ also requires an elevated storage tank to be constructed once you reach 2,500 connections to the system, which we're expecting to happen close to the end of 2026. So our recommendation tonight is to authorize the issuance of this request for qualifications and allow us to bring proposals from engineering services, from engineering firms back to you to consider.
How long does the qualification last? I know it's quotes, they generally have timelines going.
So what they, what the firms submit is just qualifications, there's no pricing that's submitted with it, it's just a statement of qualifications. I believe we have this going out for about a month, we're requesting qualifications to come back on September 26th, based on just what's in here. So that's about a month to get completed and then submitted, but as far as, would do the qualifications necessarily expire? I'm not aware of a time when they would expire.
It just longs it doesn't have a timeline.
There's not a time written into, into the request for proposals, for qualifications, excuse me. Just to remind you on how the selection process works, so you are not allowed to select an engineer based on price, you have to select based on qualifications. So you receive the statements of qualifications from the firms, you select who you believe to be the most qualified firm, and then you enter into contract negotiations with that one engineering firm. If you cannot come to an agreement with that one firm, they are then rolled, and you go to your next most qualified engineering firm and begin contract negotiations. You cannot go back to that first engineer at that time. So you have to select based on qualifications.
Is this just for water plants to do it that way?
It is not. It is part of the Professional Services Procurement Act, so this applies to attorneys, engineers, surveyors, and a slew of other professional services.
You made it to this few times for our projects the last couple of years.
Is this advertised in the Conroe Courier?
It'll go in the Courier, it'll go on a few websites, it will also, we'll post it on one called Civicast, which is where we post for the construction projects as well, but yes, it will be posted in the paper, it'll go on the city's website as well.
But these firms, they're, they're going to be involved from the design work to the completion?
So the firms, the way we have it proposed in here is that these firms will complete the design from start to finish. Once the project enters construction, those firms would be available to respond to, to respond to RFIs from the contractor and review submittals based on the design. From there, we would propose that us, as your city engineer, take over construction, administration, and inspection for the project.
Is the money we allocated for CIP, the $400,000 for design work, is that part of the funds that are gonna, we're going to talk to these people about once we, you know, pass the qualifications?
Correct, so $400,000 that was in your, that's in the proposed budget, that's our estimate for what we feel a design should take, but of course you actually get that hard number from whichever engineering firm you select. That $400,000 amount is only for design.
Catherine, can you give us a downside of not approving it tonight?
Sure. Downside of not approving it tonight would be that you are delaying increasing your capacity based on your future needs. It opens you up to the risk of potentially being limited on your capacity, and delaying this type of project, I would say is, I would not recommend it, just based on the capacities that you have and knowing what is coming, not doing this project would put you at risk of not being able to provide service to the future residents, future developments.
That's a good, that's a good reason to approve it, probably.
I move we accept item three, agenda as, as presented?
I second.
It's a move by Stan, seconded by Casey, to accept item number three as presented. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote, open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting item number three as presented, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept item number three as presented. Item number four, consideration of possible action on setting a new public hearing date related to a special use permit application for a paramedical and fine line tattooing business located at 14375 Liberty Street, Montgomery, Texas.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This item, as the memo explains, we do apologize, we did not get a legal notice in the paper in time, and are asking to recall this public hearing so we can get that legal notice processed.
So when do we want to set the hearing for?
As soon as possible.
It says September 24th at 6:00.
Already passed it once. I move we accept agenda item number four as presented?
I think we have to state the date and time and place.
I would, yes, please, for the record. Yeah, September 24th.
I'm sorry.
September 24th.
I'll go ahead, good. Move to set a public hearing for September 24th, 2024 at 6:00 p.m., to be held at City Hall, considering the paramedical and fine line tattooing business located at 14375 Liberty Street.
It's a move by Casey, seconded by Cheryl, to accept the public hearing for September 24th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m., to be held at City Hall, for the application for a paramedical and fine line tattooing business located at 14375 Liberty Street. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote, open for discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept item number four as presented. Item number five on your agenda, consideration of possible action on calling a public hearing related to a rezoning application of 15.46 acres along Lone Star Parkway West of Liberty Street, from ID industrial to be commercial and R2 multifamily residential, as submitted by SPT Montgomery LLC, December, I think that's supposed to be development number 2215.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Again, Mayor and Council, this is a rezoning application, or a rezoning application that we've gotten in for a project that has been kind of on again, off again in the city for several years. Again, when we receive the application, what we do is bring that to y'all. The ordinance says that the council calls a public hearing, so it's, again, there's no real, you know, analysis or recommendations that are coming out of here, we're just trying to call the public hearing this evening, but I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
So the chunk, there's two pieces there, one is industrial, one's commercial, correct?
Currently, it's all zoned industrial.
Industrial.
So this piece, this L-shaped piece here of Lawson, between Lawson and Lone Star, that came to us before, earlier this year, or late last year?
Yeah, sometime last year, that's the one, and they're also, they've also been looking at that, kind of the bigger hump there to the, to the far west.
So they're, they're applying again?
It's the same company?
Right, so they've been slowly kind of communicating, I'll let, up to Catherine.
Same people?
This is, this is the same people, this is superior properties, they're the ones that came to y'all earlier, they're wanting to do multifamily, duplex style, on the west side of the development, and on the eastern side do commercial, which is why there's a split zoning of be commercial and multifamily to accommodate both of their proposed developments. Once they, once they get the rezoning, they're ready to move forward with the plating process, but the zoning decides how the setbacks look on the flat, so this is the first step for them.
If we deny the public hearing?
I almost heard it now.
No, you can't. No, you have to, they have a right to a hearing, you can decide to deny the application after the hearing.
Yeah, because we hadn't seen the new plant yet.
It's just the same plant with more stuff added to it.
This is the same type of development that was included in the feasibility study that we presented to you, they haven't changed what they're proposing.
No.
Okay.
All right, so this one, make a motion to set a, make a motion to call a public hearing for October 8th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m., to be held at Montgomery City Hall, considering rezoning application for 15.46 acres along Lone Star Parkway West of Liberty Street, from industrial, from ID industrial to be commercial and an R2 multifamily residential?
Second.
It's a move by Casey, seconded by Stan, to accept item number five, the public hearing set for October 8th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m., to be held at Montgomery City Hall, regarding the rezoning application of 15.46 acres along Lone Star Parkway West of Liberty Street, from ID industrial to be commercial and R2 multifamily residential, to be submitted by SPT Montgomery LLC. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote, it's open for discussion. All those in favor of approving the public hearing set for October 8th at 6:00 p.m. at City Hall, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept item number five as presented. Item number six on your agenda, consideration of possible action on the final design documents as prepared by MERJE, I'm not going to even butcher that, design for the city of Montgomery, Texas, wayfinding program.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council, because a couple of you are on the EDC and are more aware of the wayfinding project at the EDC starting in late '22, early '23. So there's been a couple joint meetings, or one joint meeting along the way to talk about the design with council. Again, the EDC started this and funded this, they approved it at their last meeting, and so the action tonight is, you know, is just to ask the council to approve this plan. So we've got a formal plan to go back and pull from when we're ready to start implementing those signs. After going through the budget stuff recently, I know that we're all aware that there's not a, you know, a lot of money sitting around for wayfinding signs and things, but what this does is this locks in this design, so the EDC or, or the city doesn't go out to spend more money on the wayfinding design when you get to that point when you're ready.
So and just to color that up, MEDC is ready to move forward with some of the signs, they have a piece of their budget set aside to start building a couple of these signs, and then I think the plan is to move forward with pieces of it every year and just add to the signs. But we can't do that until we pass it here.
So basically, we're binding ourselves up to this plan and these types of signs in these locations, right?
The location's not so much.
Not the location, just the design.
Sign, signs are still.
Now, just an FYI, it was about $80,000?
We spent about $69,000 to deliver on the design and look for the signs.
To design these signs, and it took almost two years, so.
So in 2040, we'll get the signs up.
Yeah. Make a motion to approve item six as presented?
Second. It's a move by Casey, seconded by Cheryl, to accept item number six as presented. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept item number six as presented. Departmental reports. Item number seven on your agenda, Public Works Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have my report in front of me, happy to answer any questions you have related to it.
I have no questions, but I was going to tell you, the easement off of Worsham Street looks awesome.
Thank you. New, new into the water plant?
Yeah, I've seen it too. Looks okay, I mean, they got a few things going on there.
Yeah. The plan on that is to use it through the construction phase, and then it'll be a secondary entrance for the future, but it won't be an everyday entrance, we'll go back over to the Houston Street entrance once all the construction's done.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you again for helping the citizen that's just outside the city limits get their water.
We're not there yet, but we're close.
All the debris picked up from Barrow, did we get help from the county? Yeah, I don't think, I haven't seen that they posted that they'd come here, but I see a lot of it gone, so I don't know if it was you or if they came through.
I'm honestly not sure if they came through or not, I never saw or heard.
Yeah, I didn't either.
But I know they were, you know, we have one resident on, or almost resident on MLK, right outside the city limits, that had a pile out there, and we were hoping they were going to get it.
Yeah, they should, hopefully, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Oh, one more thing, Mike, who does the bathrooms at the park? I know it's your guys, right? Extremely clean every time I go, like I go and they're doing a great job. I always like peek in, so I don't know if there's like a boogeyman in there or not, but very great job.
Your barbecue's funny.
We've tossed it up over the years, over whether we contract that out or not, and we've always come back to the conclusion that we, we hear compliments like that, and I know as soon as we start farming it out, we're going to, the care factor's not going to be there.
Right, no.
We'll be better for now.
Yep, good job to the guys, let them know, thanks.
Thank you.
Number eight, Utility Operations Report, Hayes Utility.
Good evening, Council. Looking at the report, everything's looking pretty good, but it doesn't really show what a tough month July was, you know, it was a tough month. Hurricane, the clarifier went down, the sewer plant again, it's just been tough. So just going through the report, looking at the water consumption, you'd see 97% accountability, looking good there, and then sort of the next page is the wastewater treatment plant report, you see where we had an excursion on the TSS. It just got to a point where there wasn't anything we could do anymore, and so we just continue making our repairs and turn it around for August, and so that's the plan. So if the TCEQ has any issues with this excursion, Hurricane Barrow, clarifier drive went down, and so that's, that's the way we're going to talk to the TCEQ about it, and I think they'll be understanding about that, considering the hurricane. Without any questions then, I'll move on to the Lone Star Report, and just seeing where we're at, and looks like we are right there, where we need to be, so we're going to continue to model that for the rest of the year. So, any questions?
Anything more we can do to be proactive? I know it's not, I understand the electricity thing is not your fault or our fault, or any of that, it just happens, but anything that we can do that, a gap or anything that we can improve upon?
We're doing it. We're doing it. We're, and Mike's working great with us, and we've worked great with Mike, and I think we're, we're hitting on all cylinders, it's just sometimes it just bursts and hits you.
Yeah, I know, I understand, yeah.
But if this is the worst, then I think we're doing okay.
Yeah.
The clarifier arm was, was a freak issue, that even Brian, the guy that we deal with all the time, he said, it's never happened. We don't know what happened, we don't know what caused it, but basically you had a piece of six-inch channel aluminum that bent on itself, and as corny as it sounds, it was wind, it all happened when the wind started blowing in, we don't know if, it's got a hard gust of wind over the top of the clarifier that pushed it, but we don't know, nothing really makes sense, but it was a very weird freak incident that we still don't know why.
Yeah, we thought something fell in or something, but we cleaned it out in the bottom, couldn't find it, so.
I know the water had been spilling a little bleachedy, and there was discoloration for a couple of weeks, the last couple of weeks, there was a neighborhood, I think you probably got a lot of calls from across from the high school, their water was looking, but I think everything's evened out now, is that the case?
It sounded like it.
Okay. I haven't heard anything in like three days.
I haven't either.
My phone was blowing up, so.
We knew there were going to be some water quality complaints, as we tried to shift things around and make things happen the way that we did, and so, but, and we held off on flushing for a while there.
Yeah, and the plan to switch back over didn't go well, we thought, so the plan was to reintroduce well three really slow, and then one week ago, well four tripped, and it was an electrical issue when it well four tripped, and they had to go to well three immediately and start hammering on it. They got, well, they got it figured out, but we didn't get to do the slow introduction like we planned all along, of course.
So next month, we should be in a position where we do the flushing we normally do, and so we can address water quality complaints like that. And, and also it's a high usage month, so hopefully that plays to our advantage in moving water through the pipes.
Hopefully today's rain, yesterday's rain helps too a little bit.
We'll see.
All right.
Mike, I do have one for you, real quick.
Oh, yes, sir.
It's for Mike, actually, if you're completed. The roof on The roof on that building in the park, where did we come up with that?
So we are getting, even it was under insurance, we had to check for it, but we still have to get multiple quotes. We've got two right now, and we're soliciting the third, we're waiting on, in fact, and then, I think they came out yesterday to look at it.
Okay.
I think. But yeah, we have, we still have to get three quotes on it with insurance, that's what we're waiting on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Number nine, Municipal Court Report, Kimberly.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm the July 2024 report, citations were 122, and the revenue was $33,867.49 for this report.
How many questions? I do. So I noticed that in the last three months, four months, we've collected more than we have in the past two years, like significantly. What are you doing different?
Well, I've gone out and visited quite a few different courts and just come back and tried to implement new things. We had a cadet before we went over to his training for the police department. He's been helping us do some collection calls, so myself and the other ladies and plus him, we're doing collection calls on old warrants and our FTAs before they actually are entered into the system. We do follow-up calls on that. We have Omni fees, clients that are entered into Omni before they put a suspension on their driver's license. We kind of do like a little courtesy call, let them know, hey, your license is going to be suspended. So once they get those letters, they'll quickly pay it. So just implementing new things to try and make changes for the court.
Looks good.
Good.
Are we doing everything good compared to the courts you've seen? If we're not doing bad, don't put it on the record.
I think we're doing awesome. A lot of courts call me as well to try to see what changes that we have going on, but I think the court is actually doing pretty good compared to some.
Something I noticed, I wanted to ask, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
All right, next up, Police Department, Two-Syllable.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have the report in front of you. If there's any questions, I can answer for you. Glad to do so.
So the massage place is closed?
Yes, we are. We sent an officer to human trafficking training, and she happened to notice some things that was going on there. And so she went in for an inspection, and then as they drove around at night, they see the sign that's put up in the back that says massage. So we did another inspection, got with the investigator, which brought in the county and some more agencies, Homeland Security. We started looking at it, and so we sent someone in. And once we sent someone in, we found out that they started doing these things after 3:00 PM. And so now we need to change our, we need to change our arguments. What we were looking at, because when you look at this place, the people who came and got the permit to build this place out were not the people who operated the place. And so a lot of times, if you have standalone places, you can normally tell if it's changing hands by the utility bills. But with this, you really couldn't tell, because it was owned by the strip center, and the strip center's paying those utility bills. So we're still looking into investigating for some human trafficking. This lady, she did an outcry, but we don't think it was a real outcry. But we're still looking, looking into those things. So we're changing that argument, we're looking at some legality things where, like we do record trucks and things, maybe we can get those guys to register and do a criminal history on. So we need to look at that, just because of the type of city we are. So we'll take a look at making those changes, and that way we can kind of, kind of see what's going on and do those inspections. And that's not only just for massage parlor, it's for tattoo shops and also some other shops. So we're looking at what other people have and how they're getting to be able to see what's going on. But yeah, it was a, one young police officer, she was, she had her head on and she was taking care of business.
I'm going to go ahead and go out on a limb and say it wasn't a resident that was running the parlor?
No, it wasn't a resident that was running the parlor. But while they were, while they were in the place, you know, a couple people came in, oh, this is not, this ain't a foot-long place, is it? No.
I just didn't know if we had like big city stuff south of us coming this way. Different foot long, okay. Or by subway, next to subway.
Oh, yeah.
Totally suspect. Okay, and good job cops, coffee with cops?
Ma'am?
Good job with coffee with cops?
Oh, yes, absolutely. That was actually the school's event when we were there, the cops were.
Code enforcement was next, did she have anything?
Oh, if you have any questions, we're going to work.
Well, I don't know if she has. And if you were back there or not.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm sorry, I'm not used to you calling me up there, but... Missing my report, do you know if you have any specific questions to any of them?
Um, I haven't heard from Taylor about the church and the music, is that died down?
Lord, Lord, not now.
Oh, okay.
Inside.
Okay, I haven't heard from, so I didn't know if that had, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, Financial Reports, Marian.
Oh, my goodness, Mayor and Council, we have our report, and we'll just point out a few things. Our general fund revenue, we're less than 1% away from achieving our projected revenue for the year, so we will definitely have surplus revenue. All departments are below or on trend to come in right after or slightly below in expenses. And then the only other thing I would draw your attention to is page 246 of your packet. This is a part of the utility revenue report. Before, you were used to seeing two reports that look like this with the blue table. That one report literally comes straight out of InCode, so we're giving you the report out of InCode instead of putting it into Excel. So you'll still continue to get the information on the next page, although we are looking at that as well, as I think there is a report that can come out of Community Core that tells us the type of permits. Also thinking that you already have the amounts, like the revenue, the dollar amount, that maybe more importantly on permit would be like the number of permits that were issued. So we're looking at what we might be able to bring you in regard to that report.
Please to get that, okay.
Any other questions?
What page did you say?
246.
246. 246 of your packet.
Sales tax? Oh, after the sales tax, go through all of that.
So 246 says receipt listing by product code?
Yes, there it is.
That used to be, used to get two pages that were like that blue table. The information that is on 246 is exactly the same information that was being put into an Excel spreadsheet for you. So we're going to give you this receipt listing straight out of the system. There's no one for transposing numbers or changing that up, it's just coming straight from the software.
I have a question. This was mentioned, gosh, a long time ago, about Six Shooter, that boutique getting their taxes. I'm asking just because I haven't gotten an update if we are receiving those yet or not, and I know that in another situation that they're claiming Magnolia is their home hub, but yet they're getting sales tax here, and so have we figured that out yet?
So we are actually working with HDL. There have been a handful of entities that have been identified, and I should have, she told me that she would be reaching out to me after the holiday weekend to discuss the status of where we're at. So I should have some additional information for you next meeting.
It's on retail, zip codes are protected so that retailers don't have the same stuff.
Right.
And she's claiming Magnolia, so they're putting stuff that other retailers have here. And so I just, I think, I was like, maybe that's the reason why too, we're not receiving those taxes on her.
And if you give me that information, you send me an email with that, I'll make sure that they're on the list. Like I said, they've identified a few. So it's a process when it goes to the comptroller, it can take a few months in order to get any feedback from them. But usually what happens is the information, they reach out to the comptroller and ask them to look at these, that these are potential, and then they go in through the process and look at, you know, what's going on.
Hadn't that been done, that was brought to our attention like a year ago, like last summer. The other tax guy brought it, he was like, we found out there was a boutique that, and... So I was wondering what that timeline is. It's going to be a nice check.
Yeah, they currently do not, they're not on our confidential data, which can mean one of two things. One, they're not paying sales tax to us, or two, they haven't reached the threshold. So you have to have $60,600 in taxable sales in order to reach the threshold to...
Yeah, she's got that.
Way more.
Yeah, and she's been here for three years, four years.
It's a rolling 12 months, so just so that you're a little bit back there. Yeah. There is also something, when, and when a...
I know your check is there.
When a business has multiple locations, there is a cause for having a home location. And so that could be what we're involved in at the moment, there might be a home location.
That's Magnolia, that's her head, that's the main, and then this is a subsidiary, and that guy knew that.
Yeah, they've been working on it since we provided them that information right after we signed up back in March, April. And so they've been working with that, so.
An old company knew about it, wow, I just, okay. I just want to make sure we're on it, because it's been going on a lot of years. Okay.
Who is ISJ Underground Utilities LLC?
They're working one of our projects, they're the Old Plantersville Force Main.
I'm sorry?
Old Plantersville Force Main Extension, the one, they're extending the force main from Redbird Meadows.
Okay, you know, just a big, you know, electronic fudge transfer. I just want to know who was getting that money. And also just one other question on Tyler Technologies. We sent them a check for $3,000, is that monthly, or what was that for? That's our, that's our...
There are several things that happen with Tyler. We do have some monthly amounts that go to Tyler. Typically, it's around, I think it's like $41 a month that we pay on the utility side for that payment portal that we have on our website for people to be able to go in and pay their water bills. So that's a monthly cost. You know, we've been doing some work on the system still. We did an upgrade, a software upgrade that was budgeted this year for the Tyler Content Management, which allows us to be able to scan and see invoices that have been attached to a vendor within the system, allows us to utilize the contract management portion of the system, and allows us to be able to see personnel information, including pay stubs. So now employees actually can access their pay stubs through the employee self-serve portal. They did not, were not able to do that prior to that piece. So that's a part of it. Another is the actual subscriptions that happen. Some of those renew, like the PD one renews October 1st. So there's different things that renew at different times during the year. So, but typically, it's not that much each month. Yeah, it's, there's just a multitude of pieces with Tyler.
All right, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you. City Engineer, Ms. Catherine.
Good evening, again, y'all have a copy of our report in front of you, I will give highlights. What's like number two improvement? So we had a pre-cock for this project on July 31st, we issued the notice to proceed. I think y'all are all aware that the project has begun. They are starting with some clearing work on the water plant site, as well as redoing the road along Houston Street to redo that eastern access to allow the contractor to get in, and they will be working from both sides of the plant to complete the construction. Going to item number five on here, the 2023 Sanitary Sewer Rehab Phase 1. So all the field work for this project is complete, and they're working on doing their post-CTV inspections, and then they'll be submitting a set of videos to us. One thing I wanted to point out is during some of the pipe bursting work that they were completing in Lone Star Estates, there was some debris and silt that entered the wet well at Love Station number two, caused two of the, two of the pumps to break. Hayes and Public Works responded very quickly and got some replacement pumps installed, and all costs associated with the damages, the cleanup, the time spent out there is being backcharged against the contractor. Going to the next page of my report, this is 2023 Sanitary Sewer Rehab Phase 2. The bore was completed underneath State Highway 105, so you probably noticed there was one lane of 105 right outside the city hall that was closed for about a week or so. They were completing some trenchless construction underneath 105 that was done, and they were out of the way for school starting and completed the work over the weekend. All of the field work for that project is already complete, so we'll be doing a final inspection shortly. The Old Plantersville Force Main, as I mentioned, they completed the bore underneath the railroad crossing. They're essentially complete with all of the work, and they are completing, proceeding with site restoration. The Old Plantersville Water Line has begun bidding, started advertising today. We'll hold a pre-bid in our office on September 10th, and we'll receive bids on the 17th. Depending on how those bids come in, we're planning to present a recommendation of a board at your September 24th council meeting. This is being funded by Redbird Meadows.
I have a quick question, that, most of that road is county, right?
Most of Old Plantersville, well, on this side of the city limits, it's a city road. Just outside of the city limits, it's a county road, and then all of Old Dobbin Plantersville, by the high school, is a county road.
So where we're putting this line, I know it's in, is it Redbird's right-of-way, or is it in county city right-of-way next to the road?
The answer is multi-part. So it is going in city right-of-way, five feet off of the property line. Redbird Meadows is also dedicating additional right-of-way as part of the project, so it's going five feet off of that new right-of-way dedicated area. Until that right-of-way is platted, it's going in temporary easement along Redbird's property. And then as it goes up Old Dobbin Plantersville, it'll be a mix of right-of-way and easement on MIST's property.
The reason I ask is that road is, is not going to be big enough the way it is now. It's going to have to be widened quite a bit to handle that traffic that's going to be there, and I just want to make sure we don't have to dig it up again.
We will not. So that was, thinking about the widening of the road is why we requested additional right-of-way from Redbird Meadows, and then we're putting it five feet inside from the right-of-way, which is county requirements. So we are not expected to have to relocate this one. Going to page three of my report, the Buffalo Spring Drive Road Reconstruction. So as y'all have all seen, they're proceeding with the work. They're expecting their last concrete pour to be completed this Thursday, and they will be able to complete striking and signage next week. We're expecting the road to be open on September 13th.
Perfect, Owen.
September 13th. Next item on here is the traffic signal. So y'all have all seen the mast arms that are installed, we are waiting on the signal heads to arrive so that they can be installed. We have been coordinating quite a bit with energy to get power to the signal. This has been a real challenge for, for both us and Home Depot. So Home Depot was able to pull some strings, and as, the latest that I heard is that they were energized as of today. So we're still confirming whether or not the signal itself has power, but we have always been told as if Home Depot has it, the signal has it. So we're, we're still confirming, it's very fresh news.
So, I'm sorry, on the previous, on the road construction, you said December 13th?
September 13th.
Oh, September, oh, that's...
If I said December, then I misspelled it September.
Because they're planning on opening around November, right?
Correct.
Right, okay.
All right, going down to page four of the report, we've got two feasibility studies for Meolago Reserve on the east end of town, and then Villages of Montgomery right here across from City Hall, kind of going around Thomas Printing and Solomon Electric. Both of those, we are planning to present at this September 10th council meeting. Had a small handful of plan reviews in and out this past month, specifically Firestone, MIST Athletic Complex, both came in, and we sent garments back to both of them. Just a small handful of plat reviews and some ongoing construction. So Hills of Town Creek Section 5 has, has started construction, so this is an additional 72 homes, I believe, at the end of the...
70 to 73, depending on what piece of paper you look at.
Right.
But...
It also includes extending Emma's Way all the way to Lone Star Parkway.
So I have a question about that, because that came up... So I have a question about that because that came up at our HOA meeting last week. And some of the residents seem to think that that's not gonna be part of Hills of Town Creek. Because we've already closed out the, uh, the, the first four sections and established an HOA. And for us to take them in, they have to give permission from our HOA to be. Put together with the current sections. Is that correct or not? Or is this just, I'm just trying to figure out if they're just using this as a name until they get their construction completed? Or if they really can be, uh, part of what's already there. Uh, because there seems to be some concern about it. We were told initially, once we set up the HOA, that everything, any new development would have to be like a new subdivision or instead, you know, establish their own HOA.
So I can't speak to how we're getting it added to the HOA. I'm not involved in that kind of process. Uh, we've always known it as Hills of Town Creek Section Five. That's how the developer presented it to us. That's how the engineer provided their plans to us. This is section five.
So Stan, it depends on how the developer filed the HOA with the state.
Okay. Okay, I got another issue with them too. We, we, we approved this way back in twenty twenty-one. And, uh, part of the agreement we made with them back in twenty-one was if they came in and we gave them the smaller lots and everything, they were gonna have more green space. Well, I've looked at the maps and I can't figure out where the green space is. So is there any way you can, uh, do you have anything that would define what portion of what they're doing is green space? Because see, they, they've already kind of upset some of our people because they cut some trees down that were on the other side of the fence of some of the, uh, on Kobe's way. And those people were, I didn't, I didn't realize this. And I'm not saying the developer didn't have a right to cut them down. I'm just saying they got cut down and it made people mad. And so, um, but I wanna try to find out, because I looked at the maps and I just can't make, make any much out of them. I mean, I, I, I don't know. We, they, we revisited this and approved it back in March. But the original plat and everything was done in twenty twenty-one.
Let me go back and look at the calculations for compensating green space that we did back in twenty-one. And I'll get back to you on how that all works out and where that is coming from.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, going on with other outstanding construction, uh, Montgomery Bend Section Two, they are addressing punch list items. And we are planning to bring acceptance of Section Two to when natural gas is available to the generator at the lift station. Just do that all at once. I believe we talked about that last time as well. Then Redbird Meadows, they're, uh, they're doing some clearing on site. Uh, and I believe they're, they're planning to get started with their water sewer drainage soon. And then the rest of the general ongoing activities, uh, still working with Tech Stop on their, um, access management plan from one oh five, on along one oh five from Granks County to Shepherd Street. We have meetings with them weekly to discuss any utility realizations that need to be done, working through conflicts, determining elevations, uh, and such. So we are touching base with them weekly. And that is all I have in my report.
Catherine, a couple of weeks ago, we spoke, um, the Lincoln Elementary Drainage. Did you get a chance to look into that?
I did. Uh, so they constructed it all according to plans.
Okay.
Uh, there was nothing that we noticed that was, um, amiss or was done extra or outside of what their approved plans showed.
So I went by Redbird the other day and they had some huge dozer out there sitting. It was on the trailer. So I don't know if they, they just loaded it or were taking it off. Because I'm still in a bit that they're turning dirt out there. So, uh, but man, that thing was so big. It, we barely had room to pass. The street's so narrow. I don't, I'm just like Casey said, we're gonna, those streets need to be widened for future traffic.
Which was part of our agreement with him.
Okay, good.
That he has to work with the county.
Yes.
So back to Lincoln real quick.
Sorry.
It's okay. Um, that, the drainage is, has changed. I mean, it's not, it's a lot more than it used to be. And you can see the degradation down on one forty-nine. Is there any plans or anything we can do to, or get Tech Stop involved? To get that washout addressed?
We, you know, just, just like the, all the others that we have done with Tech Stop, we're continuing to make them aware of erosion that's threatening their roads. We included that one as well. Uh, as far as the change in drainage patterns, I, I can't speak too much to that. I do know that they constructed it according to plans. Uh, and that not only has there been construction at Lincoln, there's also been some changes in the, in what's along Martin Luther King. So it could be multifaceted as to why things potentially look different.
What changed on Martin Luther King? I guess I'm unaware if there's been additional changes on it.
So I understand a couple of new homes have been built.
Not last time I was there, but okay. All right.
On the one end for sure.
Where?
Absolutely. On the one end of it, they put in what, three friendly homes?
At the very end, it might close to ninety-seven?
No, the other end.
So I understand one property owner received a home grant.
I don't know where.
A different, a different home could, can change, uh, for engineering areas, different footprint.
What about Loopy Tortue? Is it open? Is it not open?
So it is open. By reservation or actually by invite only.
Invite only?
So you have to go invite yourself. Seriously, you gotta go invite yourself. And then you get on a waiting list. Cause they're doing a, what do you call it, a soft opening to train their. Thursday is my invite.
Council members could get in there.
By invite, if you go invite yourself, put you on the list, just like, like I said, Thursday. I'm, I'm gonna go check it out on Thursday.
You have to wait that long?
Anything else for Catherine? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Thank you.
I make a motion to accept all departmental reports as presented.
Moved by Casey, second by Sam, that we accept all the departmental reports as presented. This motion is debatable, amendable, or surprise majority vote. It's open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting the departmental reports as presented, say aye. I was opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and we will accept the departmental reports as presented. Next item on your agenda is council inquiry. Counsel, what's on your mind?
I have a candidate to fill our open council seat. And I'll visit with you about an executive session, but if there's other people who have a candidate, we should probably do it all at once.
Sure. Uh, Gary, you probably can confirm, but I think Energy and Joseph, I think his situation is.
Everyone communicating.
Good, yeah.
I think he's good.
I think so.
And then you're back home.
Okay.
I know that Energy has been communicating with them.
Yeah, sounds good. Okay.
Take them serious.
Good. Probably seen the new flag up at Simmons Bank. So, that's good. Yes. Okay, all right. Well, then at this time, uh, we will head into executive session. It's exactly seven o'clock PM. Adjourned to a closed executive session as authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, chapter five five one of the government code sections. Section five five one dot oh seven one, consultation with attorney, and five five one dot oh seven two, deliberation regarding real property. And five five one dot oh seven four, personnel matters. Uh, seven PM, we will go ahead and head into executive session.
All right, it is 9:08 and we are back in session. Counsel, entertain a motion to adjourn. Now, let's all have something else?
There's nothing else you can do.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
It's been moved a second. We adjourn. It's 9:08. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. We will adjourn at 9:08. Thank you.
Thank you much.
Gary.
We'll talk another time.
Dave, do I give this to you? I just don't want to take it with me. Put that on my head. You do not need to.
Yeah. So first are the minutes that y'all accrued. Come on, man.
Okay.
So these are easements all related to the Ole Penney Road water. So pathfinding issues just briefly. I confirmed with Allen just to make sure because in my mind I was like, wait, these need to go to council. You do not need council action to accept it.
Okay. This is just them giving us the easement so we can do the water.
That's right. So we're going to have three total.
Of the same thing.
A year for three little pieces. And this one, those are on the M.I.S.E.'s property. Those are kind of forever easements. This is a temporary. This is not. This is for the high school.
Oh, okay. Oh, got it, got it, got it, got it. Yep, got it.
And then this little temple, it goes away when the flat section's taken. But for some reason we need it now. Guess what? It used to be an easement. So I'm going to hand it over to Kim to know where I was sitting because she can say.
I can't. And I said, oh, no, no, sir. I was trying to tell her. And you started yelling at me. Thank you. My hand out on the table and said, no, sir.
Okay.